Relax.
Okay. This is the city council meeting from March fifth, eighteen supporter. We have a couple of excuse assignments to the city Cameron Stewart Warren this evening. And that's it. Let's have a call.
Counselor Westover here. Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Snyder.
Here.
Counselor Shump.
Here.
And Mayra.
Here, thank you.
Let's uh.
My belief must see those who fly in the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Thank you. So thanks for these, I'm sure this will move on to the RB cog population review presented by Mike Cavalero. On a mic.
Thanks. First time anybody's on the chair for me. Never too late.
Um, I just checked my email. Pat March said that it hit the wall in the Senate forty-eight six. Right there. Relax. Okay, good evening. I'm gonna depart a little bit from the normal format. A couple of months ago, actually late last year, I informed the RB cog board that the cog in, the central Oregon cog that's based out of Hood River was. Can you introduce yourself? I'm sorry, Mike Cavalero. Okay, it's one city councilor's here. They probably don't know who you are. Oh, I'm sorry. Who the cog, you know, actually, Center of the cog, so. I'm her. So like, what's that called? Director of RB cog. Sorry. So um the central Oregon cog based in Hood River, uh, we understood was going to fold. And so we're, there were, there were seven cogs in the state, now there's six. And it was a lot connected with it. There, you know, there are always undercurrents here and there. The, the county's, it's in Gilliam, Wheeler, Wasco, Sherman, and Hood Rivers. So it's difficult for cogs when you have so many counties with uh, light population. It's just difficult for us to be as cost effective as we can be in a higher population area, but they did have some, um, they did have some solid, financially at least solid programs. They were the area agency on eighteen. Uh, they did the building codes for the counties, except for Hood River. They did building codes for all the counties. Um, they did some transportation and they, uh, they did workforce. So they had a good selection of, of programs. Um, and as I said, there was a lot underneath it, but in the end, what they didn't do was, was convince their members that, that the cog was a good return on investment. So whatever the details were, it didn't matter. The fact is their members didn't see them as valuable enough to keep around. And it's a bad outcome for everyone. I think in the, in the, in the future, they'll, they'll ruin the day that they disbanded the cog. The only good thing that came out of it was it was a, it was an essential lesson for staff at the cog. Because, you know, you get complacent and you don't think everything, anything could ever happen. You get too comfortable and you just don't respond the way you should to your members. You're not as hungry, you're not as aware of what's going on. So I did try to drive that point home to staff and I think, I think they listened. Um, and what's important to me, and I've learned this lesson over the last twenty years that I've been here, is that you really have to concentrate on two things. You have to concentrate on the core programs and you always have to look for an opportunity to do something new or add something to what you already have. Uh, I think that's the most effective way to make, make yourself constantly valuable. So in terms of our core programs, um, a number of things that we do, we've done for a long time, we do really well. The metropolitan planning organization that we staff and the staff room was four decades now. That essentially is provide an efficient conduit for federal funding for transportation. And we do it really well. It's mind-numbingly bureaucratic, but we do it well. Somebody's gotta do it and we do it well. Uh, land use planning. Uh, Dick Congress is our planner for hire and uh, he has benefited in a number of jurisdictions. Some of them he's a contract planner and some of them just comes in when they need help. He worked with Phoenix on PH five and PH ten, uh, helping you prepare for your eventual um, urban growth boundary expansion. And it's just, it's an essential part of what the cog is. We just provide a service when the jurisdictions need it and when they don't need it. Uh, we remove that service and they don't have to pay for it when they're not actually using it. Um, we have our community development, which has turned into the last maybe eighty years, it's turned into a real powerhouse in terms of grant administration, grant writing and grant administration. And these are very complicated grant programs and Pat Foley built that. And although she passed away last year, we had somebody who was just as obsessive compulsive as Pat was, and she's gonna be just as effective in managing these programs for jurisdictions. And the good part is if, if our services, grant administration services are written in to the, uh, to the grant application, uh, that administration's completely free to our jurisdictions, depending on the grant program. But most of the big, uh, grant money programs right away for, for, for buildings, things like that, uh, USDA, CDPG, those kinds of programs, the service is free. So why wouldn't you? It's certainly, uh, it's certainly almost a fait worse than death to give that responsibility to a staff member who's probably overloaded anyway doing everything else. And if they haven't done these programs, uh, for a long time, there are so many trip points in these programs, they'll just make mistakes. And then, you know, it's a difficult, um, outcome. Um, we also do the senior meals program. I think it was, I think last year you guys had about seven thousand meals that we distributed, mostly to homebound seniors. And in Phoenix, I think it's more than fifty-one percent of your homebound seniors are over eighty years old. So these are, and living alone too. So these are, and female. So these are people who really need these services. And it's not just the one meal a day. It's to notify the volunteers who can check up on them, make sure they're okay and report any difference in their physical or mental health, uh, to family members or whoever is the indicated individual. So we're very proud of that program. And actually a third of the one point eight million dollar budget of that program, both counties is raised locally. So we augment the federal funding, uh, by a third, so six hundred thousand dollars. So that's a, that's a huge amount of money to pump into this. And if we only relied on the federal funding, this wouldn't be much of a program at all. Uh, otherwise, oh, and there's senior disability services. Uh, essentially there are a lot of activities other than food and friends. But what it boils down to is providing services so that seniors in our area can stay in their homes as long as they, they possibly can. So if you live in Oregon, you are the least likely senior in the entire United States to be forced into a nursing home. And the state is very good at this, uh, and we're also very good at it. So we're very proud of that. And if there's anywhere, you know, if you have to grow older, Oregon's a really good place to do it. If you don't wanna go to a nursing home, Oregon's a great place to do it. And we again do a really good job of providing those services. And then finally, natural resources. We're the only cog in the state to have a natural resources program. Um, and it's funny because southern Oregon isn't really the easiest place to do environmental programs. I easily get into, uh, trouble doing them. And, you know, a couple of times in the last twenty years, years, we have done, slacked on the risk by our board, but it's been very infrequent. And we have found that balance point where we can do cost effective and value added environmental programs that, uh, don't raise the ire of our member jurisdictions. So we do a lot of riparian restoration work. For example, we helped plan the greenway and do the maintenance plan on the greenway. Uh, so a number of things that are valuable, but are not contentious. So we're very proud of that. In terms of outside of these core programs, the kinds of things we do to, um, in- increase our value added, to provide that return on investment. Um, I'll go back a little bit. In the last twelve years, we reduced dues three times. So right now our dues are about thirty percent of what they were twelve years ago. So that's completely opposite to your normal trend. And we did that because we know that if we become a burden, even the perceived burden on the part of our jurisdictions, that's gonna make our ability to survive, uh, a little less certain. So, you know, we've done some cost cutting. We've done a couple of things. We, uh, jumped on the opportunity to use some overhead for, um, pre-project work that was not permissible until two years ago. And so we used some of that money to, uh, reduce the dues too. So we are always paying attention to how we can, as I said, become less of a, of a burden. We also last year did it a lot more transparent how we use our dues. So in your, um, in the list of projects, the first item on that list of projects on New York City is an accounting of the kinds of things we used half of your dues for. We said we'll always apply half of our dues to, to activities that directly involve us with our jurisdiction trying to investigate information that they need, uh, try to look at programs or projects that might interest our jurisdictions. Whatever it is, uh, meeting with jurisdictions, investigating, as I said, that's what we're using our half of the dues for. And then you'll also see that there's some additional activities that then we pay for out of that indirect money. So in your case, you know, half the dues were three hundred and seventy or so. And then there was another six hundred, I think, or so that we used indirect for to pay for those activities that we don't have a project for yet. But we need to interact and we need to pay our, our staff time to do that. Uh, the other thing is we bought a drone and we certified one of our staff. Um, and they call him drone pilots. I think it's a little bit much, but anyway, he's certified as a drone pilot now. And he can, uh, he can use that drone to help our jurisdictions do any number of things. I mean, we've had, we've had some interest in, uh, in doing, um, some, some footage for websites. We've had some questions about, um, doing some point in time footage on construction projects, uh, to overfly potential areas for construction. Um, so we are gonna use it to do, um, a longitudinal study of our riparian projects to show the, the benefit of planting along riparian, um, areas. Uh, any number of things that you can think of, we're prepared to, um, to lend you our drone and our drone operator. And to, you know, to keep the cost down, again, we're not going to charge within our loaded, within our hourly rate. We're not gonna charge for eventual replacement of the drone. We're gonna use that indirect money and dues money. What we're doing is just going to charge for the hourly rate for that employee. So we're trying to keep it as, as inexpensive as possible. Uh, and also finally, uh, due to a presentation from a member of the community, oh, maybe like nine months ago now, we became aware of Shake Alert. Uh, and that's the earthquake early warning system that's being established in, um, in Washington State, Oregon, and California. And for the first time, this generation is the first generation that is capable of being warned before an earthquake hits of an impending earthquake. So it just seemed to me like a complete and absolute game changer. Uh, and extremely interesting, I mean, I just, I like that kind of thing, but it also the idea that you could warn people of a major seismic event that is gonna hit our state sooner or later. It could be tomorrow, it could be a hundred years from now, but we are overdue for a major seismic event. And we're talking a magnitude nine earthquake. Uh, it will devastate the state. But if we have the ability to know that's coming and we may have thirty seconds to a minute and a half warning that an earthquake's coming, we can do a lot of things. We can get people out of unsafe buildings. Uh, we can stop critical infrastructure machinery so that it doesn't shake itself apart. We can shut valves. We can shut gas lines. We can do, we can stop traffic from going on the via duct. We can stop people from being parked underneath the via duct waiting for a red light. All sorts of things are gonna be possible in the next few years in this state, in the Pacific Northwest. But right now, the process is kinda stuck in a planning loop. Um, they wanna, they wanna do so much planning that they're delaying the implementation. So although the technology we have now is initial, at the very least, we're, we've been, um, we've been lobbying the United States Geological Service and the University of Oregon, which is there implementing our. We've been lobbying them to allow our area to be the first area to disseminate, um, this desktop software in a number of what we consider to be critical, um, entities. And that includes our member jurisdictions. Uh, we're getting Asante and Providence to sign on. We've got a number of others like the EXO, the nine-one-one call center here in Jackson County, the nine-one-one center in Josephine County. Uh, we're also looking at RBSS, Metro Water Commission. Some of the essential providers of infrastructure and those entities that have critical staff that will allow us to recruit rate better to rehabilitate the area, uh, after an earthquake. Eventually, this will be available to, to everyone through cellphone apps, reader boards, things like that. They just haven't developed it far enough for that to be available. But at the very least, um, we thought it would be a good idea to jump on the bandwagon early. That means that we'll probably get access to new technology faster than anybody else. And at least we can do some protection of the area early on. If the earthquake doesn't, doesn't happen for the next fifty years or so, that's great. I don't need it. Uh, but it's, it makes me sleep a little bit, uh, better at night, knowing that at least some of us are protected. We're also talking with the Education Service District to see if we can leverage the software because they're the technology provider for all the schools in three counties, Jackson, Josephine, and Platte. And see if we can't extend this, this, uh, early warning to, to all the schools in our area, which should be a huge relief for me. And we have schools that are in unreinforcement masonry buildings. And if we get even a decent earthquake, there's a danger of those buildings collapsing. So if we can get those school kits out of those buildings, uh, we could act, we could save a lot of lives. So this is the kind of thing that we try to do. We try to jump on opportunities to bring added value to the region. And I'm a real, I'm a staunch believer in Shake Alert. And actually, um, we did just send login credentials to Ray today, so um, we'll be able to set that up in the city here in the, in the near future. We're actually installing our computers like here, over at City Hall, the police station. But that's kinda neat wherever it happened a few hundred miles away. You can find out about it before it comes rolling this way. Right. In time to react. Right. Most of the earthquake, well, the earthquake that's really gonna get us is, is off the Cascadia Subduction Zone. So that's why we're probably gonna get between thirty seconds and a minute and a half warning. And if you're motivated, thirty seconds is a lot of time. Um, I think that's it. So I try to do it quickly, relatively quickly. Questions, guys?
I'll just add something real quickly. Thanks Mike for coming in and giving us this breakdown. I'm a rep on the NPO and had the opportunity to sit in on the RB cog cog budget process last year. And I wanted to say how impressed I was at the level of services that the, the cog helps to provide to our community. Really elucidated for me, um, how many programs get support from RB cog. Um, and getting to hear directly from those programs like Food and Friends, um, and some of the, um, other, uh, more social service oriented projects, um, was great. So I think our community is being really well served by the organization as well as having that opportunity for intergovernmental, uh, planning around transportation and that kind of thing. So thanks for your work.
You're welcome. I just, I'll just mention that, you know, we don't get all the credit for our NPO being recognized in state for, for functioning well. All the member jurisdiction representatives take it very, very seriously. And we're pretty sophisticated in this area in terms of our transportation awareness. Um, and so a lot of the credit goes to the members of the NPO. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. All right. Next up is public comments. All things are not on the agenda. I think we have one signer.
To, and your seniorship too.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Good to see you. Gabriel, do you wanna say anything to me?
Um, so I, I kind of.
Those are, come on, those are high school days on.
That's right.
Just guys use.
Okay.
How's it going?
Okay, that's good.
That's good.
It really is. Because, so what's happening?
I just wanted to see if they made one.
All right, Gabriel Wilson, lazy, busy, it's on.
Yeah.
Um, so at our school, it's, it's been very, we've been trying to do a lot of things with, a lot with technology. Um, because, uh, new social media is never finding that, but and, but they keep on getting postponed and the, um, um, the principal just went on leave for like a week or two. And it's been very interesting because everyone is doing this transition where we now have a new leadership. I, I, I saw you mention that with, in the email of talking about with, uh, leadership. And so we have had a new leadership teacher and she is very, uh, stressed out with everything. And we've just been having a lot of things, ideas with the city center, like clubs being, using them. But then it gets to the principal and he's been shutting down a lot of ideas because right now so many people are coming with different ideas. But then, uh, senior projects, everything, but using the city center. But, uh, it seems like he's been shutting down a lot of ideas because he's been so busy. I can barely set up a meeting with him. We haven't had meetings with him in many weeks. And so he's, and he's now on leave and so it's been a very stressful experience for me. I'm just trying to do my best and it feels as if I come here unknowledgeable and I don't know.
Have you tried to sit down with Toby? Have you tried to sit down with Toby a while now, Scott?
Yes, but and, but it always kinda gets off the topic, you know, and we try setting up, because you know that very well. And, but I, I don't know what I can do, you know, because he's, we're, the ASP president isn't setting up these meetings. And I feel as if I was just supposed to be that bridge, you know? And now it feels as if I'm trying to create even more communication to set up these meetings and then pursue the communication with the students. And I'm not sure what I can do, you know?
Leadership is tough, yeah.
Oh, totally, but it feels like I have to, because like, I know the president every, like, three days, I'm like, someone's this next meeting. Uh, it's like every month and they're trying new things and I just feel so unknowledgeable.
You really, you have some grassroots ideas in here from the students. You can bring those in also.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be so formalized.
Yeah.
None of the principal, you have some grassroots ideas and they're in a really, in embryo stage, do you wanna bring them to us?
Bring them to us.
We'll, we'll, yeah, we're, we're up on it. We're looking for any out of the box ideas that we can find.
Yeah.
To rely on at the community center.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be as formal as you may think it has to be.
I'm not in charge of. Yeah, because I, because I.
That's fine.
Yeah, because I've got a film and he's like, ah, I'm not sure about that. And so, thank you.
That's okay. We appreciate your time.
Of course, well, I mean, just do your best.
Yeah.
No, seriously, what's your best about what you have to offer? Yeah, you know, you're doing, you're doing your best. I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah. Even just like a brainstorm list of ideas, man, I can kinda plan a C with that. Like, so if everybody's kind of thinking, uh, it sounds to me from listening to you, like you're thinking about prioritizing them, like who, like just make a brainstorm list.
Okay.
And then because that's, we're just thinking of ideas, like there's nothing set in stone yet on that. And there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for time and that kind of stuff. And it's not like a race to get at this limited amount of time.
Okay.
We're, I mean, we're limited by our imagination and so you guys can share those ideas and help us out a lot more. And then down the road, I mean, it is, it's stressful time there right now. It's getting towards spring break and stuff's getting real, like, so. You know, just stress yourself out.
Yeah, it's just so interesting because the school is switching up so much and now we're doing even more budget cuts. And so now I'm worried about like.
But they just passed the same million dollar bond for the school history.
I know, but they're doing like, ah, so two math teachers are being let off.
For measure ninety-eight, I think.
Yeah, something like that. And, but then new teachers are coming in with the same roles.
Yeah.
So, but, and it's just changing so much and like the leadership teacher switched halfway through the year.
You don't have Robin anymore?
She, she, so I think she wanna leave again for a little bit. And so she, so she is, but she isn't. I think she's distancing herself, I've seen.
Yeah.
I've talked to her a few times and she's like, I might be getting someone else, you know, so we'll see.
So, yeah, don't stress her. I can feel, I feel like you're stressed. You get a guy that cares a lot. That's one reason you got picked for this, but just, um, it sounds like you're doing your best. And just come with some ideas, that's it. And even just sharing that with us, so we know it's going on at the school, there's this time to change, is, it's, it's natural. So, you know, we talked about that in biology, when you're.
Of course.
Caterpillar to the butterfly, so.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Those general updates are really helpful too, budgets and what's going on, so thank you.
I'll give you a, I'll give you an A minus, give. Let's hear from, uh, Sandra Christensen. Come on up and stand here for us.
Well, I have two addresses. I have two addresses.
Okay. Well, that one. Okay.
Okay, I'm Sandra Christensen, four sixty-one Ryan Road, Eagle Point, and seventeen ninety-two Houston Road in Pink's.
Got it.
Okay, um, basically I wanna know where we're at with getting the road back to two lanes. And, um, um, are we kind of in a loop where I feel like you've heard from our people, you've heard what they want? When are we gonna see some action? Or are we gonna let it just ride on and ride on and ride on until you figure people aren't gonna pay any attention anymore? And it would just stay put the way it is?
Well, I'll just respond real clearly, you know, that we're gonna have a session, but not just in future, in the next few months to discuss where we're gonna go with ninety-nine and two lanes or something. And, uh, we'll put out notices and you can come back and speak again. So we don't know for sure where we're gonna make that move or what we're gonna do, but hopefully get together in the future in the couple of months and talk about the issue. I think we're all in agreement. The way it is right now, I guess, I think it's good. So it's definitely gonna change somehow. We want as much public input as possible. We just showed that with the church street, uh, from two city council meetings ago. We heard from everybody on those streets, took everyone's ideas.
Yeah.
And looked at all, looked at all that and weighed that and I think gave something that that community and that street really wanted. So hopefully that's a good, kind of harbinger of things to come.
Yeah.
You know? It was good practice for us.
Yeah, just, I feel very danger, endangered, oh, whatever the correct word is. When I try to go up on Fourth Street across ninety-nine, so I can go home.
That's a, it's a priority, but we did Church Street, but also the community center has been a lot of our focus the last few months also. So that's been a lot of, a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to see where you, where you're at in the process or if it has to go back to, uh, the planning commission or what happened.
It'll come to council first, then to planning.
Yeah.
We'll keep it in the loop, um. Why don't you go ahead and email me?
Okay.
Okay, and just, uh.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Give me your number. We'll, we'll keep it in the loop.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Michael.
All right. Caroline Marshall?
Thank you. I think I used to wait on the Eagle Point. My name's Caroline Marshall and I'm here as the monitor coordinator of the community dinner. Uh, dinner's on Thursday, March eighth, five to seven P M. It's free, it's a dinner. And, uh, this is the little poster that we had made up. And this week our mascot chicken is heading down to, uh, Blueberry Park to fish. Feels really fish ought to be for dinner, not chicken. And Chief Booker pointed out it's illegal to fish there, so our chicken's in trouble. And it's raining, snowing, and sunny, like it does here in Phoenix. We're gonna have barbecued, uh, chicken legs, baked beans, mixed vegetables, and a really good dessert, cause Alfred, Freddie, he wants to be known as Freddie now. Wait, Freddie is, uh, really good at dessert. Um, also this Saturday, March tenth, we're gonna be having this indoor wreckage sale. If anybody wants to come down and help shlep things from upstairs to downstairs, if you're doing something like that, we'd love it. Or come and spend money for a fundraiser, anybody?
For some. Or make donations, but goods, so.
There's always that.
You can.
No, no. Junk, because, uh, we have a playground.
So no more use.
Yeah, only brand new. Okay, well, um, and thank you for doing this. Just my, like, introduction.
Can you also, um, I don't know if this is something you know much about, or you probably do because you know a lot. Um, that, when do they do the, like, when do y'all need help with like unpacking for the food, food project stuff? They've seen lots of volunteers in there and like, scrambling and it seems like there's not enough of a sense of that.
Right. Green bag days, those are the second Saturday of the even month. So like, uh, February's an even month, April's, you know, even month, and the second Saturday. And we start about three o'clock. And we start about three o'clock.
Okay, that's all that'd be great.
You guys all look so strong and schleppy you are, you know?
Slepp.
That's other word schlepp.
Well, thank you Sarah, that's just great.
Thank you Sarah, you're welcome. You're so welcome.
Thanks, Darren.
Next up on the agenda, we have like consent calendar with a couple of things on the agenda. One is reports on patient of actual action, the council log updates, the judicial plan, action plan. I'm in it from city council, February twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Anyone have any items for consideration? That's it, I'll take a motion.
I mentioned a preview consent calendar.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Passing unanimously, thank you. Next up with resolution number ten, ten resolution adopting standards, criteria and policy directives. We use no hiring of the city manager in accordance with O R S one ninety two point six two oh and one ninety two point six six zero seven D. And I want to have Dave speak to this, sort of a housekeeping item that we have to do before we can move into executive session to discuss where do you uh pick for the city manager position?
That is correct, maybe recall from last year, this is the resolution, the council plan adopted. It'll specifically interview uh for the city manager position in executive session. Does not require you to conduct interviews in executive session. Although I would kindly highly recommend that secondly be conducted at executive session. So uh in order to do that, you need to uh first take public input on the higher end criteria that are contained in the resolution and then adopt the resolution.
It's going to shoot like deja vu.
Any discussion there?
Did we do that last time? Do we need to do it manually or every time?
We'll hold it on you. Each time we go to hire a city manager, it's.
Semi annual.
Semi annual. We gotta keep our goals real, right here, keep our goals realistic.
Sure we do.
Okay, thanks.
You got your answer?
Any discussion? If you need to open our public access, that's it. Well, uh open the hearing, if anyone wants to speak about the um resolution number ten ten adopting standard criteria and policy directive to be used on hiring the city manager in accordance with O R S laws. Anyone want to speak in favor or just speak about the resolution? With that said, I'll close the hearing. Move to discussion. I'll accept the motion.
I move approval of resolution ten ten, a resolution adopting standard criteria and policy directive to be used in hiring the city manager.
Sorry.
Any more discussion? So roll call please.
Counselor Schen?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Wester?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, passing the energy, thank you. Next up with item number nine ordinance. Reading and adoption for second reading in public hearing ordinance number nine eight three ordinance to repeal the contents of chapter three point zero four replaced with new rules filed after lead Oregon cities two thousand seventeen mile policy for public contracting and purchasing code. Mike wasn't here last time around, but we went through this, we pretty much did a phone last time to his awesome grammar issues and I got working organs and I think Jim worked with city attorney to refine things. But when we have, don't speak to this and can we kind of partner to make sure?
Yeah, so uh this was uh scheduled for a second reading this night on the last meeting, but given the fact that we needed still some additional kind of uh confusion as to some of the language, what it meant, some of the interpretations. Uh I went back and looked at it again, so uh typically what you do on these second reads is if there's some typos or some kind of as long as there's corrections, it doesn't change the meaning of the ordinance. I'm I'm always good with it and we would proceed forward as opposed to we start the whole process all over again. So I wrote down those uh those uh pages that I on your on your um agenda that I made some changes to. If you recall, um I had not, as for the city and the definitions, it said the city and then it said insert the name. And I forgot to do that, but it's in there, it wasn't. Sorry about that. Yeah, and then on page ninety six, um just remember there's about there's about ten changes. So there but again, they're all mostly past governor and then one, two, several sections. I have some kind of explanations. On page ninety six, uh it's on uh, you'll see it, it's D three E. And it's and that was one that uh that Mr. Snyder picked out, which was purchases of any goods or services in excess of seventy five hundred dollars. And I I put in there buy as opposed to from, was from and I changed the, was it ever the buy? So that it was now reads buy city employees or requires authorization to city manager. Okay, that's on page ninety six. Page one oh one was another correction. And um it says uh now here was some confusion from the council. And that is is that well, what happens when uh i- in case of a small procurement? Uh if there's an amendment, where do you go? I mean, what happens if you have an amendment? And well, the point here is is that typically uh if you amend your contract, and this is Oregon state law, amend your contract and it's more than twenty five percent of the original pump, you know, the original price. Then uh it's not just going back and and renegotiating, you have to come to council and talk to council to get permission to lift up your uh that that process if you're going to amend your contract to something larger. It typically is there so that uh whoever's staffer is going in there and before he starts working or she starts working on just adding more to a contract, he has to kind of confront the the uh the city council that, you know, says why are you doing this for? Well, okay, you know, so that that fact that you have to explain it to city council tends to keep contracts from being amended. Okay, so that's that's and so I put in there your expla- you know, the explanation as to if you're going to amend this. Uh a small procurement contracts may be amended without uh approval of the council if the cumulative uh amendment does not increase the total contract price by more than twenty five percent. So if not more than twenty five percent, you don't have to go confront the council. If it is, you're going to have to explain it to the council. All right, um that's the same thing that uh same language I've used in the next one, which was intermediate procurement. That's for goods between uh ten thousand and a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh there's a process by which you go through that, you can you can let a contract through that without going to council. But once you, once you hit, once you, once you make an amendment for twenty five percent of of whatever that contract was, you have to go back to council. So I again, but inserted that language. Intermediate procurement contracts may be amended without approval of the city council if the cumulative amendment is less, you know, or the increase is less than twenty five percent. So that's page one oh one. Uh and if you have questions, please stop, okay? Help help me explain it. Again, uh this is for personal services, that's one of page one oh three. Uh made a correction and um personal services may be procured through negotiations. This is for a personal services contract. Uh this is uh personal services contracts has to do with uh with me, with an attorney or with uh consultants, uh with other experts that that normally are not um doing something necessarily to a plan but are bringing artists or bringing you regional ideas and all that thing. And typically personal services contracts are negotiated differently uh in the public contract context. And in this case, uh again, once again, uh you don't, once you make your contract, you get the price. If you have to increase it more than twenty five percent, I just add the language in there. You don't have to do that, um uh you don't have to go back and get approval from city council unless you're going to raise your price more than twenty five percent. So again, the idea is that default is going back to council if you go over twenty five percent of your contract. That's one oh, page one oh three. Uh page one oh five is um again, that has to do with uh contracts uh that are um for let's see which one I have here. Direct negotiation, personal services may be procured and then um okay, selection or ranking proposal, so again, if the amendment personal service contract procured by informal written solicitation pursuant to this section must be maybe amended without approval of the city council provided that the amendment is within the scope of the original contract. And so it's asked me within the scope and the cumulative uh increase cannot be more than twenty five percent. It's just page five. Same thing goes with page one oh six where uh did this for, I believe it was a first contract. Uh R F P, request for proposals. And again, without approval, that that's the same language in there, without approval of the city council. Uh unless you go over twenty five percent. Page one thirteen is uh is uh oh, I put in Jackson County, they want to know what county it was, it was Jackson County. And um the time, there was a spelling there, the bottom middle or the bottom of the page, it says timeframe was one word, should be two words. Okay, then in the next page, one fourteen, I only got three more corrections. On page one fourteen, um if you recall, uh we were talking about uh protests and judicial review and in this case, special procurement, special procurements again in this laws of of public contracting. There are times where you need to have a specialized, I can't think of a good example, but you 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 kind of have to break some of the rules in order to, you you have to kind of select and you have to be more. Uh it's not so objective, you have to, you have to make objective criteria about something that might be subjective. If that makes sense, in other words, you're trying your best to make it even so everyone has a chance. But sometimes there's when you when you're doing a special procurement, uh there may be circumstances and situations that just make it very difficult, so you're going to try your best as a as a purchaser to try to make this selections as evenly uh as even and as uh fair as possible for the public to submit their um their bid. So what you have to do is you have to come up with a number of criteria to do that. And once you make your criteria and once you establish your criteria, then the city manager sends that criteria out to the public and says, this is this is the criteria we're going to use for a special procurement. And it says that in this one, it says, and this is where Mr. Snyder was a little confused and I can understand it. We kind of had to readjust the the language in there. It says that the approval of a contract specific specific special procurement by the city council is subject to judicial review only if judicial review is stopped before the contract is awarded. Okay, otherwise, a contract awarded pursuant to the contract specific special procurement is conclusively presumed valid and may not in any future judicial or administrative proceeding be challenged on the ground that the contract was awarded under an invalid special procurement. Which that basically means is we went through all of this process, we gave notes, we told everybody what the, you know, what their standards were and how we were going to come up with, how we were going to make this selection. And once we did that, that's it, you know, you get to, you get to challenge that, you know, you were subjective or you were too subjective or you made it too fit, you know, uneven or whatever on these particular standards or what have you, you've done. But then after that, if it's all goes through and you can have judicial review on all that, but once that's done, if you go through the process and you're not selected, you can't say, oh, I I object because I wasn't selected and you didn't do the process right. Like no, we already went through the process, you had your chance before we let out the contract. Once you get to object to the criteria, but once we established the criteria, you don't get to object to it now that you're not selected because you didn't meet the criteria. Okay, that's the same language that comes right out of the statute. I went right to the Oregon revised statute, came up with a language and I, and that's why it really hasn't been changed because what I've done is I've actually taken language from the state of Oregon and inserted it right in here so that it makes it clear that anyone who wants to, you know, you can challenge judicially uh a a decision the city makes, but you have to do it in the right time, at the right place and the right process. And after it's made, then you don't get to do a second bite at apple. Okay, so that's what that language is there for. And then I just changed around, I said, an affected person may not seek judicial review of a denial of a request for a special procurement. That's basically at the very end there because it's basically just summing it up. It it tells you right very beginning why you, where you have to do it, but at the very end, it says in that section, if you see on 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 the rest of that paragraph, I added C. And an affected person may not seek judicial review of a denial of their request for a special. Thank you. And I did the same thing in the next page, on page one fifteen, which has to do with uh with a uh different form of contract, but it's for a sole source contract. And I'm not going to get into you again about what sole source is, but it's different than special procurement. It's arcane, but I I understand the the world of public contracting is is bizarre. And that's the reason why why staff wants it because yeah, if you're not familiar with the rules, it gets very confusing and if you're not right, then you end up in the middle of losses. So you gotta be right, so this is this, unlike our old one, which kind of leaves you, you go anywhere you want to. This one is kind of spells it out to you, it's like a recipe book where you just follow the recipe, you'll be okay. And and that's how this this ordinance is set.
Were there the changes you want to know?
And that's and that is um that is it, I I'm sorry that I.
I know, were you okay with the change it?
Yeah, I read them all, thank you for taking time to do all those different, with my brain malfunctioning.
I know, you're you're right, I mean, it was kind of hard, it started with the wrong sentence.
Yeah, well, thank you for doing all that, I don't have anything else to kick on here, but I would like to get your opinion on how some people work in case it does happen, don't change any documents.
Oh, yeah.
The world is much more complex than a single change or a single amendment to a contract. So if you have a contract, it's in process and something happens that caused the change of ten percent. We now know, of course, that he can approve it, no problem.
And the term of your current rule is what? It is.
And then the next change comes in, it's another ten percent, so now it's only twenty percent change.
That's right.
He can still do it. And when the next one hits, it's now ten percent, it makes it thirty percent. The first two choice of decisions he made stand without, and he, yeah, decisions only on that third one, which now exceeded.
And that.
For that ten percent.
That third one is one where I think you folks would probably be the most interested, like why is it that we've had three contract amendments? And now we're at thirty percent, I mean, before you know it, I mean, how much further do we have to go, you know, kind of thing? So yeah, you get a couple bites of the apple, but it, once it hits twenty five percent, uh it's like, all right, bring it back and it's your check. You know, you're you're giving a lot of, what you're doing is you're giving a lot of authority to staff to make these decisions because you know that the rules are good, but once someone goes beyond the rules, then it needs to come back to you so that you can say, is this a rule I want to, you know, do I want to go over twenty five percent or do I not? Do you come up with good reasons why you need an amendment? Because there may be in those circumstances where life is complicated and maybe, you know, your staff will be able to convince you, yeah, we, you know, we really underestimated this one or no one had any idea or something and then you can, then that's your decision at that point.
Yeah, at that point, it becomes cancel the contract, delete the contract with or without this additional last change.
That's right.
Because the other two are in process, can't mess with it. So the limit is the focus of what we can actually work with, we only look at that small implement that pushed it over the limit.
Yeah.
But not all the things already decided, not, I just wanted to make sure that was good.
Okay.
I I would say it's actually extremely rare that that happens.
Yeah.
Probably you can count on the fingers of one hand the number of times I've seen that happen over the course of my career.
Here in the city, but not in federal contract, it's a daily occurrence.
Hell, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, if they were okay with awarding, so I'm going to open up a public hearing before we deliberate, I'll say anything else during that, okay?
I'm I'm all done with this tomorrow, so I'm going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number nine nine three.
I'd like to hear from people who like to speak in favor of ordinance number nine nine three. I'd like to hear from people who like to speak in opposition to ordinance nine nine three. With that said, I'll close the public hearing and open up the. With that said, I'll close the public hearing and open up the council discussion. I'll accept the motion if you guys are okay.
This is incumbent upon me to read the I move a table of second reading of ordinance 993 to repeal contents of chapter 3.04 and replace with new rules, models after legal Oregon City's 2017 model policy for public contracting and purchase code, and establish February 2018 as a public hearing date in second reading of said ordinance.
Amendment issues in March 5.
In March 5.
That's correct. I was reading for page 1.
Yes, you're right.
We have a hearing? Okay. Let me say it, establish March 5, 2018 as a public hearing date in second reading of said ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, for the discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Schump?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yes.
Okay, we're up to staff reports. And
Nothing for me.
Right. City manager?
Dave Kaner. I do have a couple of things to discuss with you. One is, in your packet, there's an agenda report for me regarding the compensation plan for non-represented employees that I'd like to implement, starting July 1, 2018, as part of the new question cycle. This is really part of an effort that I initiated last year, and somehow goes in there. But it's an effort to bring more fairness and consistency to, not just to the compensation for non-represented employees, but to terms and conditions of employment for non-represented employees. And we have actually developed a new document that we call Terms and Conditions of Employment for Non-Represented Employees. What I would like to do long-term is do away with non-represented employees having disparate employment agreements, but instead say, you know, now are the employment agreement down to one or two pages, and then said, by the way, here's exhibit A, which is terms and conditions of your employment, and have the same terms and conditions apply everybody. I think that fair and equitable treatment of all employees is a fundamental principle of public sector employment, and actually, we don't have that right now. So I think this is an important step in that direction. The other thing is that frankly, this is the first organization I've ever seen that didn't have steps in a pay range for non-represented employees, and I think it's certainly not the only factor in terms of hurt, which we've identified as a threat in strategic planning, but it is a factor. You know, normally, the fairness of compensation shows up among the top five reasons for employee satisfaction with their work. I do think it's an important thing to address. What I'd like to do also is, starting with this next budget that we're about to start preparing, is in every budget, publish not just this compensation plan, but the compensation plan for the entire city. So that the public can go to a single page in the budget document and see what we pay different positions, so that it's all out there, and somebody wants to know, what do you pay a police officer? Well, go to page section, section of the budget document, and it's all spelled out. So I'm giving this to you for your information. I believe that under your code, I have the authority to implement this without council approval, so just telling you this for your compliance, so you're not surprised. I'll be happy to answer any questions about it.
Each step, a city represents one year of service.
Yes, and of course, moving up a step is dependent on satisfactory annual review.
That we renew for another year. Teacher salary, we can't put an amendment, teacher salaries. It's a big deal.
This is just the way we do it. I've actually told, I've actually told Dave that I completely disagree with doing this, but he's going to do it, I think it's going to go okay. But to me, it should be the city manager's discretion to pay an employee more than a particular schedule because they're doing an outstanding job, and pay employees not doing an outstanding job less, just like the private sector does. They're doing a wonderful job, and they give them a $50,000 pay raise for some crazy reason, and feel it's worthwhile. Go ahead and do it. If it feels like someone's getting a pay decrease, you go ahead and do it. As a manager, I think someone should be allowed to do that, and we as a city council, as his boss, could say, you're out of your mind. You're out of here. But that's just the way I feel about things. In the public sector, they don't do things the way that the private sector does, and Yeah. I would just agree. Let's throw that more private sector influence on the public sector and work better. That's my two cents words in the history of the government here. I've never seen an employee leave because of pay. But with that said, I wouldn't say too much. I'm okay with allowing me to do what needs to be done. It's discretion, and that's fine.
I just want to add, I want to think, Dave, for putting this together and for implementing it, I think this is key, that we have equitable pay for all of our staff, and I do think it's a factor in retention, and I think that our staff do so much for the city and for all of us, and also, these are, you know, these are public dollars, and we need to have some kind of mechanism for making sure that when we increase a salary, it's happening in a measured and equitable way. And so a pay scale really makes sense to me, a salary range really makes sense to me, so that the public understands where their funds are going and in what capacity. So I hope that this will be a good next step in helping us to both attract new staff and to make sure that we're appreciating our current staff and keeping them on board.
I lived for decades in the federal system, military and government, civilian alike, and what you're talking about exactly embedded there and has been for generations, and that allows everybody to understand where they stand with everyone else and what to expect in the future if they continue their employment. That's a positive thing. And most of it in the public, private sector, where to manipulate salary based on the qualifications uniquely of one person, and only that person and I and HR people knew what would be paid. And that caused a little bit of condemnation of the other workers. So I think what you were saying is right for public sector thing, complete disclosure, knowledge is the best way to do it to create less morale problems, what we're saying.
I concur 100%. I've been in the public sector for a long time, that's, it's very clear, you can't, it's, I mean, you could run into lots of issues with playing favorites, or I hired my buddy, I don't know, you know, pay him or her more, and why, and then you get a subjective kind of discussion on it, well, this is worth more to us than that. And this, I think also, like, when you look at the teacher salary schedule, it really gives you motivation to stay committed with that discipline. Like, this is where I'm going to be next year, and if I do a career with this, this is where I'm going to be, and this is what I can expect. So I think it actually promotes a lot of kind of institutional commitment, too.
Thank you. So Baker, want to comment?
Just sound like transparency.
Yeah.
I do. I don't necessarily agree. I think I'd like to see more private sector ideas than the public sector, to be honest with you, but I like transparency either way.
A couple years ago on the budget, we actually had the salary for every employee, also the column for workers, the column for health insurance, the column for the Viva, and it was a pretty good summary. I'm going to request that again this year, they not only see the salary range, but the salary, you see all the other benefits and the toilet at the end. That's good. That's real transparency. That's great.
I like the structure. I like the structure, seeing where you're at, you know, so there's comfort there, and it is attractive to potential employees.
And, okay. We're going to go with that?
Yes. Mr. Deary and Chief Vogel and Lieutenant Price, I had a meeting today with residents in Portridge Place, who is a cul-de-sac in the city, and I believe that they came to a council meeting in Irwin, before a month ago, we started here, to complain about a problem they're having with one of their neighbors who is apparently operating a drug house on their street, attracting a number of unsavory individuals. And it's, the conversation was a little uncomfortable at times, because the reality is, there's nothing necessarily happening that's illegal. It's not illegal to park your cars in the street. It's not illegal to come and go from a house at all hours. Not illegal for her to let people stay in the house, and they may be drug addicts, they may be criminals, we have no way of knowing that. However, there have been numerous code violations. The police, I think, have been very good about responding to every call from the neighbors, and our code enforcement officer has gone out there and cited them on a number of code violations. And of course, the question comes up, well, what more can the city do to rid us of this nuisance? And one thing that has been done in Medford, and it says, Ashland has such an ordinance, I was there for five years and didn't even know, but it's what's called a chronic nuisance property ordinance.
Well, we're running a lawsuit now.
And essentially, what, the way one of these ordinances work, is it says, well, if we have to respond more than a certain number of times within a constrained period of time to a certain number of specified police calls or code violations, we have the right to
Legitimate.
Yeah, legitimate complaints. We as a city have what is essentially the right to foreclose our property. And this is, this is a very big deal in the United States of America. We don't take people's property away from them lightly. However, I know the mayor has talked, he's heard about other drug houses in the city, and frankly, this is, this is one method of dealing with them. People won't voluntarily clean up their acts. This ordinance gives the government a method of coming down on them pretty hard. If you're going to be a nuisance, and you're going to have great problems for your neighbors, we're going to come down on you. So having said all this, the question I would put to the council is, before we start working on this kind of ordinance, is this something you would even want to take a look at? Because it'd be some work on our part to put something like this together, and I'd rather not undertake the work. I believe this is not something that's right for physics, something that you don't really want to take a look at.
Can you give the little more detail, like what kind of timeframe or number of occurrences? Foreclosures say they own the property outright, and imagine the proceeds go to the owner.
Foreclosures is really the, if all else fails type of thing. So a lot of, a lot of the types of remedies you would have, remedies like an abatement, preventing, removing someone from the home, for instance, or actually preventing someone from living in the home for a certain period of time, like a stop work orders, the kind of one I classically think of, where you have dangerous building, because it's a meth lab, and it's, it's been, you know, seen and actually been raided, and, you know, by law enforcement, and they actually find the chemicals, they know it's dangerous, because it's got the residue, yeah, left over, so they'll, they'll actually put a red, red tag on the outside of the house saying, don't come in here and tell me to get the thing cleaned up. That would be that kind of remedy, and it actually gets to a foreclosure if after that there's still continuing chronic nuisances that come from the home. But that, I mean, the likelihood of that happening by that time is fairly unlikely, but again, that's always a possibility. You know, the calling someone, here's, I'm kind of backing up this a little bit, calling some place a drug house, first of all, is always kind of a loaded verb, because when we say that, it's, a lot of that, who've been in the law enforcement business, you talk to the victims or the next door neighbors, and you say, well, you know that, I know that, but proving it is an entirely different matter. I mean, it's not, yeah, we think, you know, we see people out there on the driveway, and they look to be exchanging something, but they could be exchanging, you know, some, a cup of sugar. Well, unlikely, but, you know, who's to say, you know, kind of thing. So it's kind of, those are, when we talk about it, it's a difficult thing to do, so you do have to have, it's not just, oh, we don't really like what's going on there, we're just going to seize your house. There's a lot of protections for a landowner to have before you actually get to that. But if, but if there's substantial evidence, evidence that probable cause, or, you know, the standards that law enforcement would have to use before they could actually say, this many incidences occurred, well, incidences that were of a crime or of a violation that were already on the books. You know, dog biting, or was, you know, we've had three dog bites at your house, you know, and a baby, we seize your dog. That type of thing, that's a chronic nuisance. Or it could be, we've gone in there three times, and we have found drugs on three occasions within the last 30 days, we're shutting your house down, and everybody out of here, you know, everybody leaves, we file a lawsuit. So that's how a chronic nuisance ordinance would work.
No middle ground. Well, how does it, so the end game, I would say this is a huge thing to consider.
Yeah.
Possible, but on the same side, something is to be done. I mean, if they're not comfortable going out and burning their house, and if we can do something down now, then we have a responsibility to do that. But let's say
The law, and law enforcement is, I mean, they, we're talking to them, and, you know, we haven't used every single tool in our tool bank, so I know that that's, you know, there's still discussions. We're just looking at, you know, in the future, if something like this, where we run out of tools, there's maybe one more.
And I would say that the neighbors were very complimentary and very appreciative of the efforts the police have made. The reality is, a police car parked in the street there 24/7.
Well, we're looking for some ideas whether the council would like to pursue this further, and Terry, you want to?
I just, what struck me the most when they were testifying is that one of the guys said that his wife had been yelled at by somebody from that house, in a thread and tote. And then the other guy said, afraid of his kids playing in front of your yard. That angered me. Seriously, did. I have kids, and I have a wife, and if somebody were yelling at my wife, it's going to escalate quickly, especially with my kids. And if we can avoid that, I think it would be really cool. I don't know, I'm not necessarily going to take their house away from them, but there has to be some sort of way to inspire behavior modification on their part.
And I want to emphasize, when I talked about taking someone's property, that is a last resort.
Right.
After everything else you have tried has failed. The ordinance gives us additional tools to deal with a chronic nuisance that we don't have now.
So we have more tools. I mean, I know the police are doing a great job, I'm sure, especially after that meeting, it draws a lot of attention. And I didn't go by there to see what I could see, I was curious, you know. And I don't, it would be nice, I mean, I, yeah, if you want to know if I think it's okay to do it before, that I'm off the hook. I mean, it looks like someone's going to stop. But there's got to be other, there's got to be steps we can take before we get to that point, which would be very persuasive, I would think, I don't know.
Well, typically, if you're looking at a situation where people are having a lot of problems with one person or two people in a neighborhood, more likely than not, that one person or two people are probably already involved in law enforcement. It's just, I mean, they not, it's not, it's a little bit, more likely than not, they, they have a record.
Right.
So, and they have a record, you know, my first question is, is who is a parole officer, you know, type of thing. But at the same time, parole officers are just overweighted and, you know, overwhelmed like everybody else these days and stuff, so that isn't always the answer. But there are other tools, there are other things in which, you know, you try to exhaust all of your remedies that you can before you go to any kind of remedy, such as a chronic nuisance. It's kind of like the law enforcement comes to the city attorney, and their hair is pulling, saying, what do we do with the guy? And it's like, I've been there, and I've helped do those kinds of processes, and it's, it hardly ever gets to, you know, by that time, either the people have moved off or moved away. You have, you know, chronic nuisance ordinances are, they have to be very specific, too, because, as I was saying to these people today, if you have, if you, if law enforcement goes to a, on three different occasions, well, yeah, there may be domestic abuse, but if you're going to kick everybody out of the house, you've just kicked the victim out of the house, which is
Or a kid.
Yeah, or a kid, which is completely, you know, no, that's, you know, so how do you fashion your ordinance so that it's absolutely protective of doing what you want? so that it's absolutely protective of doing what you want without, without injuring anyone's rights? Yeah, and so I, I'm very sensitive to it. Like, there, the council, do you wanna add something?
I just wanted to suggest that there's some macro issues here. One is, if you have such an ordinance that does certain things, it takes a certain amount of time to get from day one to where the last resort decision is. You know, how long the process is that? And then a little layer on top of that, there are costs to doing that, legal cost or whatever, to doing that. And when do you reach a break even point when it's not worth doing it for money's sake? I don't know the answer to that. In this particular case, I'm just wondering why there aren't some other law enforcement organizations that have interest in this kind of activity, not involved in this.
So sometimes the size of the problem is not big enough to drive to the point where you wanna have matched from the county coming and taking the situation.
It may be, but that's a book, that's a source of information about where the network is.
I understand. At this point, we're just looking to see if we wanna move forward and give staff the okay to craft an ordinance to help deal with the problem. Are you okay with that?
Well, the other part is, and the last part in this is, how do you write an ordinance that will stand the test of a if you haven't wasted your time making the ordinance, wasted your time trying to enforce it? I mean, I don't know that the legal aspects of writing one, that the judge will actually say, "Okay."
Well, there's precedent.
Wait, let me just say, as focused the mayor of, well, wherever, and she crafts ordinance based on an ordinance decree. So I think there's some precedence with some boilerplate, some stuff out there that we can start with. So that's where we're starting. We're not starting from scratch as the mini big city, something like this.
Yeah, that's boilerplate, that's boilerplate and test, tested.
I don't know if it has been tested in court.
As they have provided their use. I think, you know, but, you know.
I don't see any efforts been used. I know Ashland, we've always kinda threatened it and trying to.
It seems like a deterrent as well, you know, you're hoping they never get to that.
Yeah, right. But, you know, are there court challenges to, to chronic nuisance ordinances? Yeah, for reasons, the ones I was referring to, the ones you have to be careful of. I mean, what kinds of, of crime are you going after and what are the unintended consequences?
Hey, Council Westwood?
So I wanna say that I, I really appreciate that the folks who are experiencing this came in. One of them was actually, I appreciate everything that they're going through, and that's really tough. I think that an ordinance is by far overshooting the situation. There's a whole plethora of, of things that we could continue to try that we haven't. And I think that an ordinance can be so broad that it may not address the specific needs of our community. I think that there are community organizations that help with mediation that we can look into outside of law enforcement. I know that there are local organizations that kind of do that work between neighbors. The, my kind of gut reaction to hearing about including an ordinance like this, I really worry about civil rights. I worry about property ownership. That's a big deal for our communities, people really care about property ownership and property rights. I also think about unintended consequences. I think about the people who often are going to be getting, you know, police called on them and things like that, are sometimes dysfunctional households, low income households. I think about, you know, people who, like we were discussing, who are victims of domestic violence. There are kids who are with parents who suffer from drug addiction. And I worry about displacing families that are also a part of our community, if it comes down to that. You know, I also am concerned for the, the neighbors in those communities. And so I think we need to seek out community authoritative solutions as opposed to punitive ones, because I don't really think that that's getting at the core of the problem, which is that people in our community need support and they need to be talking to one another and have an avenue for doing that, rather than having the city say, "Well, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about you, so now we're gonna prosecute against you." So I'm, I'm opposed to having staff look at an ordinance. I think that that's, we have a whole gamut of things that we can explore before you even get there. And I also worry about legal challenges and I worry about this jumping the gun and wasting staff time when I think we have pressing priorities and that I think this is not an equitable way to address the problem. I agree that there's a problem, but I don't think this is an equitable way to actually move forward on it.
Thank you. I attended this chamber conference meeting the other night, Carolina was there amongst some of the people. The meeting ended and we spent over an hour talking over this particular problem. And it was a pretty devastating indictment of certain properties in the city that are affecting other people's quality of life in our city. And I got here for, it wasn't the first time that I hear about problems regarding a particular neighborhood. An ordinance is nature would be just a last, last, last resort to help cure a particular problem in property. Not the perfect word, try everything we can for the city to make it right there. But we need to do something, we just can't let it hang out there. If we're not gonna do something, I think our pockets would be absolutely ticked that we're not taking the next steps. And I think we should look into it so we can move forward.
Sorry, can I speak to, are we having a time crunch or something?
It seems like we're moving through this real quick.
No.
But Terry, I just.
We're asking Chief Valper in the department to do something about this. If they can't do it without tools, that's ordinance. I worry about people's civil rights too. I'm also worried about the civil rights of neighbors. And the kids ought to be, they have a, they should be able to play in the front yard without a weird threat. The wife should be able to come home with two arms full of groceries and not have a neighbor yell at her because of whatever reason. And there's also the danger of whatever happened, if, if a situation does escalate. Sounds, you know, we've got a pretty good warning here, that we have an escalating situation. I appreciate the concern for civil rights and I agree with it. But I, I think it goes beyond the civil rights of a person perpetrating a crime, because the victims as well, the neighbors in this case. And if we don't allow the police to have the tool to stand on, at least to give them, you know, obviously, they're doing everything they can, but it's not enough, because we need to give them more to be able to do, I think. Personally, I'd like to give them more tools and trust on board. I don't wanna displace families, I don't. I'd like to just remove the problem within that residence. But, but we've, we've gotta do something to help these people. We can't just say, "Well, you know, the name of civil rights, they can continue to ruin, ruin it for everybody." I mean, at some point, you know, the many outweighs the few when the few are being so bad. Lack of better work to the many.
This is a really important issue. Maybe we should agendaize it and have public comment and talk about the issue. So why don't we put on the agenda, invite people who are affected and just maybe people that were at the chamber conference meeting come here and tell their story and have the full city come talk about it. It's a really, 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 really important issue.
These things can bad quick for a lot of people, and I've heard them nixed about it.
And we're not a time crunch then, but we do have two executive sessions, while things I think are gonna take some time tonight. But would you guys, and I, I feel uncomfortable really going into the details of this particular issue without having a public notify first. But I'd really have a public notify and have, you know, transparency as far as what we're gonna discuss. Put on the agenda, maybe you have thirty days, notify people that you come to the meeting and talk about things, then we can chat about it with the whole council.
But we're using time also.
Hopefully, that happens this month.
Right. Yeah. Well, my role, my job right now, we do this a lot. We do everything we can to restore it, right? But what's most effective, and if you look at the restorative justice kind of paradigm, restorative, you know, these restorative relationships happen when you have high support and high control also. So it's not just about mediation, it's also about the potential for controlling the situation. So doing these things in parallel, having the restorative thing with mediation and working with neighbors and communication and all that, in parallel with the punitive, right? So say, like truancy, we do truancy and we have a set plan. Sign, you know, citations to the judge, the district attorney and all that. But then we also try to do as much barrier removal as possible in support of the families. So doing those things together, hopefully the restorative pathway works, but having that safety of punitive is necessary sometimes too, and helps facilitate restorative work. Our house is going this way, this is what we need, that's kind of the table of decent mediation.
I suppose that's true, Mike, and I, I know we're gonna agendaize this and have more conversation about it, but it seems like we haven't even given so many models a chance. I also wonder how, how something like this could be in, in like retribution. How many people call their neighbors, call police on their neighbors just because they don't like them? Or, you know, or, I mean, we'd have to get more into the logistics, but I think about, you know, how many times has, you know, a nuisance called them maybe because somebody's playing their music too loud? What, what is the threshold? And so I think that there's gotta be some in between before we go to what I consider to be pretty extreme, to have an ordinance that talks about taking people's property away, before we've even discussed, well, what can some more models look like? How can we bring in nonprofit organizations that do mediation? I agree with you, Terry, there are issues that need to be addressed. But it feels like a pretty big jump to, from going to, well, we've had the police out a couple of times to let's impose an ordinance that allows people's private property to be taken away. That seems like a big leap to me.
You know, I, I just wanna clarify, we keep saying taking people's property away. We know what shape or form or plan this squad, they will literally take people's property away. That they said that'd be a very, 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 very last thing that we'd ever do, gonna see a change to take someone's property away. But it's not what we're looking to do here. It'd have to be extremely extraordinary situation that would even come up. But with that said, let's only agenda 30 days from now, and we can talk about it in more detail. If that's okay with your opinion. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Nice discussion. Thank you, subject issue. Okay. Forward down to mayor's comments and the council comments. What you guys, but I had help. So you wanna go first or?
And I just wanted to remind folks that if we can, some folks have filled out the online.
I'm sorry.
Numbers. And there's an online community assessment that the Ford Foundation wants us to do. I know Terry did it, Stu did it. I think it would be awesome if it were to be, it takes like ten minutes to fill out about, right, the terms of work, something like that. And essentially, the, the reason that they've asked us to do this is they provide us back kind of like an assessment of our community, which I think would help us with strategic planning for the next round before we go into the budget process. I think it's a really cool tool that they're starting to use. So I can resend that out and if folks could commit to, I don't know, doing it by the end of the week, that'd be awesome. Is there anybody who thinks they can't do it or won't do it, refuses? Okay. All right.
Put me on the spot.
Okay, I have one thing I've been asked to notify everybody, it's more for the council than anybody else. Southern Valley Region Five Small Cities Meeting, host City of Phoenix, that's us. March fifteenth, eleven AM to one PM, two hours. Phoenix Public Library over on First Street. Hosted lunch. Agenda 2018 legislation legislative session recap and a two to three minute update from each city, issues based on city implemented innovation programs, et cetera. That means somebody has to go there and present, not just be present. But anyway, I just wanna make sure everybody knows about the work in due.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Council Sean?
Sure.
Nothing new for you?
Okay. Speaker. Well, I went to the chamber conference the other night, and like I said, it was a good meeting. At the end, we talked about the issue that we just talked about here a while ago. I spoke to the manager of the twenty-four shops and they're willing to pay at least partially, maybe everything, for those signs that we talked about the last council meeting, rectangle sign leaking to the D-City Bureau to create good news. I got a little information that was taking care of the parade the last couple of years. Carolyn Bartosz just reminded me that we need to start planning for the parade. Need some volunteers, not sure when you city staff to help that take place. I think staff, you have some volunteers to work on the parade, which is gonna be pretty difficult, you know it again. And this item here.
Very cute.
Is a mockup of what they, what someone would like to have as far as a monument sign for the city. We had, I put the copy of the sign that we were proposing into the, into the newsletter and wanted some input. And this mockup here is what was talked about during for renewal a couple of years back. It has the regular monument sign like we have now, and the words aren't important, it's the way it's stylized. It would have some steel coming out, it would have backlight in here. It kind of emulates the logo that we currently have. We do have a person adjacent couch here in the city who does metalwork. He could make the metal, work with whoever's making the monument sign and work it out where the light is there plus the steel. We can talk, we don't have to talk about this tonight, but we can talk about this if you guys would like to talk about it. You guys approved the sign that was before, so this is a little alternative. I wanna break the council, show you guys and say, "Hey, if you wanna discuss it further, because we actually sort of press, quote unquote, say on the sign."
I would, I would add, certainly bring the design back to you, but the, the signs that you saw previously, we can't do because that's stylized Phoenix, the bird is copyrighted. So we have something else. And the one thing that we had talked about doing is simply taking the sunrise and substituting it for the bird, keeping the same monument, sign of the time, the bird is seen.
What I felt was steel coming out with the mountains and having it lit up at night would be pretty cool.
Pretty, yeah. So.
I like that, I like what you're talking about, dark green with the forest, and the forest green with the black writing. There's no contrast there, it'd be hard to read.
Well, this is just a, a mockup, it's a first mockup, and, you know, "Welcome to Phoenix", those probably are gonna be the words, before we had, you know, "Founded", "18", whatever it was. So it doesn't have to say "Welcome to Phoenix", but the words are just there as a placeholder. They're just a general design of.
And there's already electrical conduit running out there, or light anyways, I think.
Well, we can put electric conduit, but we're not, it's gotta be solar, I'm sorry, we have to be a solar.
It's either that or we get some approval from a little guy to tap into the pole, that's not covered. And that, that background would be gray.
Does it pass the mystery, this teenager test, to be able to pull things apart?
Uh. Does it?
I don't know. There's the three year old pull off the wall test, then there's the seventeen year old pull off the wall test. These are different tests.
Are you guys okay with further, you know, discussion on a sign as opposed to? We can't do it anyway with the logo that we have on there.
So we're talking about agendaizing a sign discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, let's agendaize a sign discussion.
Okay. Making it, Jason here and Terry, help me out with the.
We can't use our current sign, right? So we need to talk about it.
We can't use the logo, right? I would caution you about adopting a sign design that is submitted by one individual without doing some kind of intensive process or design services. So we're only, you, you need to, listen, you know, this is the, we just, we just discussed it, so, right? So we have the constraints, and once they've created the constraints, if we don't pick them, then they can't come back, right? We just, we.
Well, we, okay. Okay, so we'll put a notice out there, agendaize it, we can write news. And then we should have a committee, something, I hate to make.
No, I don't, I don't wanna do committees, but I'm, I'm just saying, if you're gonna, if you're gonna hire someone to design a sign, you need to do it through a competitive procurement process or some kind. Now, the, the cost of designing a sign is probably something that you could do in informal quotes process. You could just call sign designers and say.
Small procurement.
Yeah, it's a small procurement.
Good one over this one, a lot.
Yeah. In all likelihood, and all I would need is three verbal quotes that I could document. And you wouldn't even hire someone. Okay, but, you know, that's, this is public sector purchasing. You just adopted an ordinance and not.
Is Jason still the planning commission?
Uh, he is.
Is there any conflict there?
I'll see why they're hiring someone out of commission. I don't know.
It's a good question.
Is Jason an artist or something? He is. He works with metal, he designs, he could design the metal like so. He's on the planning commission.
Does the planning commission have to approve the sign? The sign location?
It's gonna, so it's.
So it's very complicated. So it's very complicated with someone.
This is the, this is the.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be.
Or do they have to like abstain from it or?
Well, they would have to abstain.
They could start to recuse themselves, recuse. I, I don't think there's a problem, it's not the planning commission has no role. I, I don't think there's a problem as long as the planning commission has no role in the sign.
I'm doing it in a, somehow.
Yeah, I, I'm checking that out. Okay, so let's talk about science at some point.
Sure.
Well, with that said, I'm, we're going to move into executives. So take a moment, we're going to move to executive session. We'll get to executive sessions this evening.